Thank you so much. All right, I will officially call our 121 2021 Simsbury Public Safety Meeting to order. If everyone could rise and join the chief in leading us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Keith. And people ask, why do we do that on Zoom? And I'll give you my honest answer quickly as we move on. It helps me feel normal, honestly, and it's a tradition that we've long since practiced on both this committee and when we were all in school. So I continue it on Zoom because again, it makes me feel normal and more connected to everybody. So thanks for indulging me on that. All right, we have no public audience comments that I am aware of. Maria, Melissa? Anything else? All right, we're keeping up our I think about six year streak here, guys, and no public comments. So either folks don't know that we meet, or we're doing a fantastic job. And then I think when I say you're doing a fantastic job, I think that's the answer. So we all have the well-done minutes from December 17th from last year. Corrections, questions, comments? Everybody quoted accurately? All right, those minutes will stand. And we will jump right into the meat of the agenda. As always, the Farmington Valley Health District. Do we have Jennifer or Melissa with us this morning? Does not look like we do. Maria, we did get an update recently. Do you want to just jump to the town manager report and we'll lead off with that?
Yeah, let's do that and hope that they'll be able to join us a little bit later in the meeting. Yeah, so again, we continue to monitor the municipal COVID alert system. We're currently in the red status, which means we have 15 or more cases per 100,000 people. We did see a jump again after the holidays around Christmas, New Year's, that timeframe. And so our most recent two week period ending January 9th, we had 29.2 cases per 100,000 people. And we had 99 cases over that most recent two week period. Our positivity rate actually came down just a bit, though, and that was 4.6% for those being tested. So I think, you know, a lot of the, you know, the warnings that the health district was trying to, you know, share with the community about being cautious around, you know, the Thanksgiving timeframe, as well as, you know, the holiday, New Year's season with special gatherings and such. After both holidays, we did see, you know, an uptick in our positive cases. In general, our workforce is remaining healthy. The month of December, we were in a little bit of a better position than the month of November. We had three staff members who were quarantined due to coming into contact with a person that had to positive for the virus. And that was both in a work setting as well as a setting outside of work. And we had three staff member positive cases during December. Seeing a little bit of an uptick here at work again in January, following the holidays. And again, just want to remind the public that, like many businesses and other organizations, because of quarantining and folks testing positive, we may be running thin a bit at times in our department. So for urgent matters, I think we're doing a great job and really staying on top of everything very diligently. We're making sure that our critical infrastructure is in place, that our services are open. But again, just want to remind folks that there may be some slight delays for non-urgent matters. We have a small number of employees that were eligible for the vaccine during Phase 1A. And I think probably either Chief Bolter or Chief Davis will elaborate a little bit more on that during their report. But some of our police officers, since they respond to medical calls for service, were eligible for the vaccine during Phase 1A. Some of our employees, we anticipate, will be eligible for the vaccine during Phase 1B. We are awaiting further definitions of what an eligible essential frontline worker entails. But again, we do anticipate that some of our staff, such as our social services employees and some inspectors and some other folks may very well likely qualify for the vaccine during Phase 1B. We have received quite a bit of information about vaccinations for folks over the age of 75. Kristen's been very heavily involved with that with the health district. So when we get to her portion of the report, I'll let her cover that for the general public. We are continuing to welcome visitors, walk-in visitors to Town Hall on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings. And we are also continuing to welcome walk-in visitors at the library on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday's midday. The library is still also offering curbside pickup and technology appointments. And again, just a reminder as to why, in part, we are doing limited hours. You know, we have a relatively small facility staff and they're doing a fantastic job, just doing thorough cleaning for us every day and paying extra attention to our spaces when the public is here with us as well. And so we're rotating days that were open so they can help clean up with the vigorous cleaning schedule that they have. We're also doing our best to try and keep our building capacity at about 50% or less on any given day. And so we have staff who are doing a combination of working remotely as well as working at our buildings. And so far, that's, I think, really helped us to keep our, again, our services going, even when we might have an employee or a particular department that has been hit other through quarantining or a positive case, but they're able to keep going. You know, we saw another town in the region who hadn't, who weren't taking that approach. And unfortunately, they had an entire department that got quarantined and that department had to be shut down for several weeks. And so we're really trying to be cautious to make sure that doesn't happen, that again, we have a continuity of services that's very important to us. And so, so far, so good. We've been able to keep up with that. In terms of our open, our open facilities, our ice rink, some of the restrictions that were in place, which was for skaters on an entire sheet of ice, were lifted actually Tuesday. So there's still quite a bit of restrictions on the ice rink, but not as restrictive. So we'll be able to allow some, some smaller groups of folks to come in and use the rink again and do some small group lessons for ice skating as well. And I think that covers the bulk of the items. And like I said, I've got a few of our department heads who will touch on some of these items in more detail later in the meeting.
All right. So just to be clear, we can still have 200 people at Walmart, but only a few people at the ice rink?
At least it's more than four now.
We're getting closer to aligning policies at the state.
Yes, yes, yes.
I get that it's difficult, but again, that, that I'm sure makes all of your jobs harder when we're explaining to the public the different roles and depending on which building or setting you're in. I don't know why. So but we enforce them or, or work through them, not, not create them. And I get that. So, all right. Any questions for the town manager? Just real quick, probably pertinent to cover in this side, we are kicking off or already have kicked off, if your department had the budget season. I know Maria and Amy and team are diligently working on the budget, both downstairs and upstairs. I'm sure Neil is neck deep in that as well. We had, I think, a pretty productive meeting with the Board of Finance the other evening, respected capital. And I think the Board of Finance is thoughtfully looking at how do we address the challenges that are present in terms of capital in this town. So pertinent for this group, as, as a lot of our public safety items do cost generally higher dollar amounts, whether it be plows or cruiser outfits. And again, not a criticism, but the reality is we do things right and safely in this town. And, and those are part of our capital needs. So no constraints that we see are coming down the pipe now from our normal capital items that they keep our, our infrastructure and our teams running and safe. But the larger capital items, it's a matter of when and how do we bond for those, when and how do we prioritize? We have to maintain good and safe schools and good and safe town services. So lots of discussions there, but I'm heartened by the willingness to collaboratively between the three boards and town staff tackle the capital challenge we have coming down in town. So more to come there, but I hope, I hope everybody's heartened by that because I think it's, it's a real positive direction we're taking here as we tackle these. So Michael Berry, Emergency Management, and I love the sweater. That is a that's a good look. I haven't seen that. I haven't seen that since I've been in the office. So again, you're making me feel more normal today. I appreciate that.
Yes, this is the classic woolly pulley. It's going out of style, but you know, some, some traditions die hard.
Keep it going. Do not let that tradition die, my friend.
Okay, so a lot of my thunder was going to be taken away by a lot of the other department heads. So I'll touch on a couple of things, and if they want to expand on them, they can. Jennifer was, I'm sure, going to give a thorough update to the Farmington Valley Health District and what's going on there. We, with Emergency Management here in Simsbury, have been working with them on doing a vaccine clinic at the main fire station for the 1A and now the 1B category. We've been able to push about 100, up to about 120 people a day through the clinic successfully to get them vaccinated with the first vaccinations. And then the second round of vaccinations will be coming through in the next couple of weeks. We are looking for a site to expand the vaccinations. We're looking probably to go five times the size that we have now, so up about 500 to probably 750 people a day. If we can do that, so we're looking for a site in town or in the area that we can do that. Couple of things that brought up, we're in our emergency operations plan, mass dispensation places would be the schools. But we try to keep away from the school when it's in service, just because of the parking issues and having lots of traffic. So we're going to keep that on the back burner, but it is still an option. And I'll be discussing that with the school department coming up if we run out of other ideas. Some other sites that have come up is the current school in Granby. I spoke to the health district yesterday. They were kind of shying away from that due to the deterioration, deteriorated condition. They went through it last year as a go-through for something like this, and they didn't like what they saw up there. A couple of other places we may be looking at is the Simsbury Inn, the Riverview. Looking at the schools, we were going to make contact with Ethel Walker at Westminster to see if we could use them gymnasium or something in those areas. So we're examining, we're looking at different places that we can go right now, and nothing's definitive. But we do definitely want to ramp up the ability to be able to give vaccines. Since the Fire into Valley Health District is very small, they're going to be working with a lot of volunteers. And most of the staff that was at the clinic yesterday that we did about 120 people, there was only about three or four staff from the health district, and all the rest were volunteers administering the vaccination. So a lot of people are stepping up and a lot of help is truly appreciated.
Mike, can I jump in real quick? And I'm sorry if this has been thought of, but the Performing Arts Center, I know it's outside. But through the usage of tents and the openness of the facility, is that something that's on the table?
It hasn't been discussed before, but it can be something that we could look into.
Thinking because you've got the circular drive, you've got the parking, and again, it's wired. You know, there's, there's a substantial amount of power opportunities and otherwise down there. I was just thinking. And it's away from, you know, the general public as well. So.
The toughest part with this vaccine, the waiting period?
Chris Peters, just on the same thread, as we look, look at places, just a quick, interesting thought. The old Wagner property, it's not pretty, but you got parking on either side. You got big glass front building. You have to clean it up. You can walk people in one end and walk them out the other end of the process line. You probably have some storage in there. Might need to contact the landowner and ask them if that spot could work too. It's good visibility, shows people we're doing something as well. Good promo, good marketing.
Okay, we'll look into that. Thank you very much.
And sorry for stepping outside of our area of expertise, Mike, but just trying to throw a different perspective in there.
No, truly, you guys know the town the best, and any facility that we can get to do this would be truly appreciated. And we want to kind of, kind of keep it in town. Even though it is the Farmington Valley Health District, we don't want to really send our residents out of town to get the vaccines if we can help it. Especially some of the senior citizens who don't like to travel a long distance. They might be willing to come to something in town where they're familiar, but they may not want to go out of town to get the vaccine. So we're trying to keep it in town and keep it centralized as much as possible. Mercy Management has been working with the Department of Public Health and Mercy Management with their bi-weekly meetings. We've been talking with the governor's office and getting all the updates or lack of updates that we've been getting. Right now, we're with 1B opening up in Connecticut. It just opened up 1.2 million people are going to be eligible to get the vaccine. But we're only receiving about 44,000 doses a week for the whole state. So we have to divide what we're being given to how many we can apply and where the greatest need is at this point. So we haven't had to cancel any appointments with the health district, but we do want to ramp up, providing we can get more vaccines. And that's the toughest thing right now is to get the vaccines into Connecticut to get into our hands. Switching to a second and on the gear, the 2020 review of the emergency operations plan has been completed. Normally, we would send out a three-ring binder to all agencies with the emergency operations plan. Since the age of technology, it's a lot easier to send it in a digital form. Because of that, there won't be like a signature page. And so we're examining how we can do a digital signature page for it to be put on there so that all agencies that are that are associated with it can make sure that their signatures of their department heads are on there, they approve of the plan. The other night, the fire district had conducted interviews for the Assistant Emergency Manager's position. There were four candidates and all four candidates were fantastic. The fire district will be making a decision on going forward on who they're going to be hiring for that position. I'm sure President Wilcox can talk about that. The weekly incident action plans have continued to go out. I know that's one of those emails that you guys see every Tuesday coming in and just kind of shove it off to the side. Basically, this is just keeping us up with the ability to seek funds for reimbursement in the future. So there's not much changing week to week. If there are any changes, I do make note of it in the email. But just the incident action plans are going to help us in the future. And also, it is good practice to see how these things work so that when we do have incidents where we are required to step up and bring in state or federal resources to help us out, such as a snowstorm or something, that windstorm, such as we had in August. More people will be associated with the plans and we can get them out faster and people can understand what's, what's actually being said in there. And with that, I'll take any questions or let everybody else expand further on anything that I might have touched on.
Mike, appreciate that. I know it's a lot going on and a lot to coordinate, and that's certainly not lost on anybody here. So appreciate all that work. All right. Maria? You good?
Yeah, so I was just giving notice to somebody who works by.
That's okay. All right, we will shift to the chiefs. Chief Bolter and Deputy Chief Davis, update from the police department.
Good morning, everyone. We still have a few members who have been affected either directly or indirectly by COVID-19. One in particular has been having some significant residual effects. So just, I guess, keep, keep that in mind and hopefully the employee, employee will be returning soon. She is getting better. The vaccines were made available, as we have discussed already, to the police officers, and many of the officers took advantage of that. So I just wanted to thank the Farmington Valley Health District, the VNA, and the fire department for making all that happen so very easily for us, as well as med control for us, which is at St. Francis. Some of the officers went to St. Francis for that vaccination. And just to throw it out there, I would just sort of follow the guidance that is being given out there as far as that second shot that is, that is being offered for the vaccine. Just, you know, if you're managing a business or an agency or a department, just plan for the potential for that to have some short-term side effects and just coordinate that, that planning, because we did experience a few instances of that as well. And that's all I basically have, unless there are any questions or unless Chief Davis has anything to add.
Thanks, Chief. Yeah, I'll just add that, kind of follow up to that, that I think on that, on the second shot from, from what we've gathered, just about everybody that we know, luckily myself except with the exclusion, after the second shot, had some I don't want to say serious side effects, but you know, noticeable side effects that either, you know, really bad headaches, body aches, extreme tiredness, you know, keeping some of the employees out of work are definitely impacting their, impacting them for, for several days afterwards. So after the first shot, there really was, I don't think I've heard much other than a sore arm. I experienced that a little bit, not, not too much, but it's really after the second shot that kind of everything kind of kicks in. So as the chief you know, pointed out, I think it'd be wise to just kind of plan accordingly for your personnel when, when they do go for that second shot, that there could be some lingering effects that could impact your workforce for a few days.
Good advice, good perspective. Thank you. All right, questions for either of the chiefs? I believe Mike Long was with us earlier. I don't know if he still is, but we do, we do have a new Police Commission Chairwoman. Jenna Caulfield, right, Chief, is, is our new Chairwoman for the Police Commission. The members as well. So we had a really, really, I think, good pre-budget planning meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Police Commission recently, per our new memorandum of understanding to make sure that the Board of Selectmen is hearing first and foremost upfront in the budget process. What are the needs of the Public Safety Police Department arena? So as everybody knows, we're safe. We have an outstanding police department. But as we look to continue to make sure that we provide great community policing, what are the needs of the department, both from, from a people and an infrastructure standpoint? So I think we're doing a lot of great communication under the town manager here. And Maria, I appreciate you facilitating all that and bringing everybody to the table because these good conversations, while, while the public may not understand, why are you having another meeting? They're really important, transparent opportunities for us to talk about really important things that matter to everybody's lives. So but the takeaways from that are, we are safe, the police department is doing outstanding job. But as our needs continue to change, evolve, and increase, we need to continue to thoughtfully look at staffing. So I think, I think we're all willing to do that. So more to come there as, as we slip in some, some more budget items. But with that, we'll move to Karen Stewart, ambulance. Good morning, Karen.
Good morning. I don't have a long report as usual, which is a good sign. As Maria had stated, we have seen an increase of COVID-related calls in our town and our mutually towns. While we've had some very busy days, our overall call volume still remains lower than usual. However, I'm considering adding our second ambulance back onto the schedule as I can, as it relates to having enough staff to be able to take care of some of those days. It's, I'm sure, sticks out in the minds of most of the people that hear the radio calls and the police department and dispatch. We continue to remain pretty well-staffed, however, and our staff and volunteers have been able to get, if not both, their first vaccination. Haven't had anybody that's had a severe reaction, although I, it appears that the Pfizer one is the one that's causing the most problems with the secondary one, but that doesn't mean the Moderna isn't as well. I got the Moderna one. I go for the second one on Tuesday, so I'll let you know how I do with that. We continue to remain, maintain an adequate PP supply. Gloves are still a big shortage and a very highly marked up product, which is unbelievable. We're talking triple, quadruple the amount of what it used to cost. So it's the, the price gouging is just unreal. Well, we continue to meet enough and we still continue to share as we can with the town. We still have a good supply of KN95s that we can give to, to Sarah for her to give out to the businesses. Otherwise, that's really all I have to report.
Excellent. Appreciate that. Questions for Karen surrounding the ambulances? All right. Chief Baldus, fire. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. We're fortunate to also continue to report that the COVID has really not hit the volunteer force. We have had some basically precautionary quarantines on a volunteer basis because of potential exposures to family members, that type of a situation. But nothing that's impacted us from a resource perspective or response perspective. We did have a positive COVID case, however, with our mechanic. Fortunately, it was a mild case, loss of smell, loss of taste, which seems to be a pretty common pretty common situation with that, with that COVID infection. But he is back to work after the, after the quarantine and appropriate testing and so forth. And other than that, things have been going pretty well. As you've heard, we have been hosting the, the clinics here. So I have to say thanks to Farmington Valley Health and certainly to visiting nurse group that's been here, Mike Berry, Kristen Kelly, who's our Assistant Chief here. He's been helping to kind of coordinate just the, the activities, but the flow has been great. They come in and they leave the, the location here in a better condition than they find it, which is wonderful. And we're really, really happy to have them and happy to be able to support that effort. The, most of our firefighters have received their first shots, again, as first responders to the community. We want to make sure that they got, got, they're, they're squared away and many of them are scheduled. We're beginning now to get their second shots. I'm happy to report myself. I got my second Pfizer shot without a single issue after the second shot. I was certainly prepared because everybody told me to, to, you know, pat down the hatch and be prepared to stay out for a couple of days, but fortunately, it was a non-event for me. So happy to report that. We did have a home fire on Library Lane this past week. And I want to thank, fortunately, there was no serious injuries. The occupant was able to get out of the home and was assessed by EMS, was not transported. And unfortunately, lost a pet with, with, with that fire. But I do want to thank the police department, EMS, certainly for their, their work, social services. Kristen came up to help with the occupant and also animal control. Mark Lewitz, who did a great job in, in terms of helping with the situation that we had there with the pet loss. The COVID situation has unfortunately impacted the delivery of our new Quint that's been on order. We were expecting to see delivery of that this, this March. However, we were informed because of the COVID impact, basically nationwide, with a lot of the delivery of different components of that truck that we're not going to be seeing delivery of that piece now until probably July. So we'll, we'll, it doesn't really impact our abilities because we still have our apparatus online and so forth, but it does push that out into the summer months versus what we were expecting. We have received our tracks for our UTV. The UTV, which has been very, very helpful in dealing with some of our lost person or injury recoveries on our trails throughout the town. The UTV is not very efficient when it comes to operation in the snow. So we have, we're able to find some tracks that we can actually put on there. This will provide us for the operation ability year-round now, especially in heavy snow. So we do have those in-house and we'll be installing those and testing the equipment and make sure that we're all set to go. But we're, we're very happy to have those in place. Especially with the continued activity with people being outdoors and using the trails more and more and more. Also, just to let everybody know, we did, since our last meeting, we did place on order a, a new pumper that's going to replace our oldest pumper in the fleet, which will be 23 years old when, when the replacement is delivered in 2022. So that's all in place there. And lastly, the only thing I have is just basically just, I guess, it's something to kind of watch for, something that's been in our kind of minds. And this, this pertains to the tobacco barns out on Firetown Road and also the 1-3 on Hoskins. But we've noticed, well, last year, we had a collapse of one on Firetown. This is between Barn Door and Holcomb Street. And we've noticed some significant leaning and bowing on a couple of the others. Certainly, we're concerned in terms of how, if in fact, those do collapse, when they do, you know, people or those that may be around at the time it would occur. And just want to, you know, make sure that the public's aware to stay away from those barns are not stable. And they, they should, you know, be mindful. The one on Hoskins, as well, as you can see as you drive by, is leaning quite heavily. And if that were to fall, it's possible it could strike the second one to it. So just be very, very careful if you're in those areas. And that's what I have today.
Thank you, Chief. Good reminder. Glad everybody was safe from the fire. And unfortunate about the loss for the family. All right, any questions for the chief? All right, Neil, not much going on in the Board of Ed's side, right?
No, we're very quiet.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thanks. Good morning, everybody. The, like everybody else, the school system has definitely experienced the uptick in both cases and associated quarantines that, that come with cases. Certainly, in the weeks since, we've been back about three weeks since the holiday and, and we have seen that increase. We fortunately have still been able to staff all of our schools. There have been some days that are close. But thankfully, we, we actually have dedicated citizens willing to still substitute teach in this environment and come in and, and make it work. So we, we have been able to do that. In addition, with the quarantines, there are many teachers who will, their class will get quarantined and they Their class will get quarantined and they will pivot to teaching from home for a week and a half. And it's. Been pretty amazing that we are able to kind of keep it going. And hopefully, we're, we're, we've reached a peak, I, I hope. And, you know, it easier for me here in terms of the staffing concerns. We did have a one good reminder, the, the most significant. Staffing concern we had was a quarantine associated with our custodial crew at the high school. And because. There was some lax. Situations with keeping the social distancing, we had to quarantine a whole bunch of employees. Crucial employees. And really had to scramble around the district to move people to be able to maintain our, our cleaning schedule. So. Yet fortunately, the three-day weekend period. Helped to get us through that and, and we're back to normal now, but it's a good reminder. When people are talking about departments. You know, experiencing, if, if you're not careful about the social distancing and. The, the quarantining can have a real impact. So the other place that I would mention that is a concern and could. Potentially see some interruption in service is the buses right now. I, I'm in a. Conversation a couple of times a week with JR Salter. We are experiencing, we're, we're. Having trouble finding people wanting to drive buses. And JR is. Really with a, you know, a crew that doesn't have a lot of wiggle room right now. So we're looking at the consolidation of some routes. You know, if there's a day that a couple of bus drivers need to. Call in sick, we could experience an interruption in service. We're hoping to avoid that. But it is an area that's feeling some strain right now. To, to pivot toward the. Vaccine side for us, you probably saw in the news that some school districts. Made the news for not particularly good reasons. We, we got word as school districts about the vaccine management system and were instructed. To upload certain employees such as school nurses. And then there are some employees in school districts that have something called an allied health certificate. People like physical therapists and occupational therapists, some pathologists. They were eligible under Phase 1A and school districts were asked to load them in. A number of school districts, including some locally. Put in all their employees at that time who were not yet eligible for vaccines. And it really. Caused a lot of consternation. I want to just publicly in this forum, let the public know that Sims Berry did it the right way. You know, just in terms of the logistics of it, but also the ethics of it in terms of, you know. Waiting in line when, when your turn is going to come for the vaccine. So I, I do want to assure people that our district. Was not one of the ones that, that uploaded people before they should have. The word we're getting now. If, you know, the supply of vaccine is. About what it has been is the potential for school employees in March. And that. That does mean. You know, it's kind of a writ large school employees. It doesn't just mean teachers. We're being told it means your paraprofessional staff, your bus drivers, your cafeteria workers. So hopefully that is. A realistic timeline, but that's obviously the word that people are most looking for at this point. So. I'll stop there and, and see if anybody has any questions.
Neil, appreciate that. And candidly, the thought never crossed my mind that our district would be anything but ethical. So. Appreciate the, the update there, but given how you and the superintendent and everyone operate, the. No, no surprise there that we did it the right way. Any questions for, for Neil? All right, Maria, I'm going to ask you to take over for me if you could. I have a, I have a hard stop eight minutes ago that I just realized was eight minutes ago. So. I apologize for departing early, but duty calls on the, on the other boring stuff that I do. So. I will, I will be back with you guys shortly, but thank you all for your hard work. And Maria, I leave, I leave these folks to you.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to have to toggle back to my screen, so I may be out of order. Was Tom or Kristen that?
I think I got, I got the ball if you guys are ready for me.
Great, thanks.
Generally, a lot of what we've been doing is just continuing to support the other town functions, keeping the buildings clean, helping with the food distribution, et cetera. We've had a few employees that continue to be out on quarantine due to exposures. We've been fortunate in that we've not had any positive cases within public works at this point. We have gotten a lot of notoriety recently for our procedure that we developed for employees that are on quarantine are still able to, as long as they're not showing symptoms. Come in to operate the snow cloud trucks. If we were in a heavy snow season, that would have been a critical thing for us. And that was something that we worked on very closely with Farmington Valley Health. And has actually gotten an enormous amount of traction within the state and actually all of New England. It's being shared now. And a couple of weeks back, we actually, as Sims Berry presented our COVID procedures. To the New England Public Works Association. It was a combination of our contingency planning that rolls through using other town departments, using our surrounding towns. And if we get. Far enough down, Jim Baldus is going to help us out with, with some of his staff. And the other thing that got a level of notoriety is when the crews need to sleep overnight in the facility. We bought them all very small pup tents just to keep them from a level of separation and making sure that as they're breathing at night, it doesn't. Infect an area. So. Just, just a nice bit of notoriety for the guys that work here and the work we're all doing to try to stay safe. That's it from our end.
Yeah, I really want to just commend Tom and his team for just how forward-thinking and creative they were. They got ahead of this really, you know, really early. We wanted to make sure that we had a good plan in place and the event that, you know, we, we live in New England, we're going to get, right? Snowstorms during the winter, we're going to get blizzards and just making sure that our roads would be passable. Again, safe for emergency vehicles to pass when needed. And again, I think that there's just, there's. A lot of layers that we've, you know, put into place to ensure that, you know, things, things are still going to get done. It may be tough, but things are still going to get done. And. Just again, I think that the model they created was really just well done. And as you mentioned, it is being used throughout the state and now New England. So good, good work to the team there. Thank you, Tom. Great. Any questions for Tom on that? All right. Thanks, Tom. Next is Kristen.
Good morning, everyone. Social Services continues to, to be strong and serving the community. As you know, one of our main focuses continues to be to help meet the needs of those that are experiencing food insecurity. This past Cheese Day, again, our numbers are still very high. Last week, we served 134 families and individuals. We provided 42 bags of additional food to families with children. And we provided 96 boxes from the Salvation Army. And we also delivered to 27 individuals who are homebound. Utilizing six volunteers for driving and six volunteers with our food distribution. So it is, it's still pretty large. It's working very well right now with a walk-up. Distribution model, trying to minimize contact and maintaining COVID precautions. And we are also still in our energy assistance season, so I just wanted to remind people out there, if you need help with your heating costs. Whether it be oil, gas or electric, please get in touch with us and we can help you with an application for the energy assistance program. And we can also assist those who need to make payment arrangements for their ever-source bill. So please give our office a call. For the senior center, we're continuing to provide daily Zoom activities for our seniors and helping them to stay engaged. And we're continuing with our Wednesday lunch distribution, averaging close to 60 seniors every Wednesday coming through in a drive-through distribution for a hot meal. As everyone's heard, the big, big talk on town right now is the vaccine. We're really happy and excited that it's here in Connecticut and that we are starting to vaccinate some of our most vulnerable people. The senior center is going to take the lead on helping our seniors in town to sign up for the vaccine. First is our 75-plus that we will be helping to coordinate their vaccination. We have been working with the Farmington Valley Health District as well as the other senior centers in town. We've been meeting weekly to discuss this. And there are three ways right now that you can sign up for the vaccine. Really important information for folks to know. You can sign up through your provider, but we're encouraging people not to call their provider first. Please wait for your provider to reach out to you. If you are eligible and 75-plus, you can also go through the state system, through the VAM system to sign up for your vaccine. And there's also a. Telephone line that you can call for assistance or to sign up if you don't have computer access. In the senior center, we're going to be providing assistance with people to sign up in any fashion. And we encourage you to give us a call. We're also going to be putting out some information on our social media. And on our website with the details about how you can get the vaccine. So we're really encouraging everyone as they become available, as they become eligible to sign up for the vaccine. And also just to remind and to encourage everyone that even if you are vaccinated. We, it is still advised, it is still required that you do wear a mask when you're in public. That's for your continued protection as well as to protect those around you that may not have been vaccinated yet. And as a reminder, we do have lots of hand-sewn masks in our department. If you're in need of some, please let us know and we'll get them to you. I think that's all I have, but if anyone has any questions on how we're going to be helping with the vaccination process, please let me know. Thank you.
Great, Kristen. Thank you so much for that overview. I really appreciate it. And it's so important. As you mentioned, you know, for us to help support the vaccination efforts. And, you know, we're really fortunate that our social services and senior center staff. Are just so customer service oriented and they are on board and, and ready to assist and, and help on, help make that happen. So thank you, Kristen. All right. And next is Nancy.
Good morning, everybody. Let's see, we are well into vaccination mode. We are the nurses for the Farmington Valley Health District. We have been at least from the start and, and we are certainly looking for volunteers, both non-skilled and skilled. Medical and non-medical. So we are trying to help the health district roll out how to gain more volunteers. The process is a very, it's, it's wieldy, unwieldy because. It does require being logged into the, an electronic system, the VAM system. It is very difficult to navigate, especially for seniors. You have to have an email address. It's really, I, I know that there's information out there about calling your providers, but honestly. Most of them don't have the answers because they don't have the vaccine and they're not necessarily helpful. So they're frustrating a lot of seniors. We have a link that we've shared on our website and Facebook in terms of the instructions of how to use the VAM system. The health district has a link that they have sent out that we have also shared. You know, it's, it's an interesting process. I am really pleased to report that 98% of my staff have all been vaccinated. I'm learning from other healthcare providers and other businesses. That the staff that are eligible only in some places as low as 50% are choosing to get vaccinated and. It's not going to work if that's what happens statewide. We have the capacity to go out and teach. We can talk to employees. We can go anywhere that you would like us to go if anybody needs extra assistance. With regards to explaining what these vaccines are and really what the risks are, even though they're only emergency use medicines. They are not at all any part of the virus. You are not going to get the virus. The symptoms you receive are really. Just anticipated side effects. I am really thrilled to say that while I had some issues after my first Pfizer. Dose, I've had the second dose and I too, Chief, have been very lucky because I had nothing. And, and you are right, you do have to still socially distance and you do have to mask because the vaccine-acquired immunity protects you. But it doesn't necessarily take care of the potential pieces of the virus that unfortunately can sit in your nose so that you can still give it to other people. So until we reach herd immunity, it's still going to be an issue in terms of trying to follow the emergency precautions. Everybody is recommending like social distancing and wearing a mask. We are ready to be anybody's resource or assistance with regards to educating about this vaccine. We will be working with. All of the communities through the health district to try to help continue to roll this out. Yeah, I mean, but we are obviously, we've had an uptick in business, which is sort of sad. The entire world does not want to be in a hospital and we've had a lot of people within the community that have COVID. And these poor people are just exhausted. So. It's been busy, but we're excited because I, I do see. It may be down the road, but a light at the end of the tunnel. So let me know. Any questions? Or. You know, if, if you need some support for your own staff or, you know, answers with regards to vaccinations.
Hey, Nancy, thank you so much for that overview. Does anyone have questions for her? All right, thank you. Uh, next is Sarah.
Good morning. So just an offer to Nancy and a reminder to. The first responders, Main Street did receive a limited number of not KN, but N95 masks. We provided them to the Farmington Valley Health District for the nurses when they were doing their clinics. We provided some to the ambulance association. And so Nancy, as you're doing the vaccine clinics, we offer those to your staff as well. We continue to provide KN95s to the business community, to town staff, to, you know, again, the essential workers that need them. We are seeing a decrease in business interruptions due to COVID. And I think that's because a lot of the businesses have started implementing where available the pods. So they have different shifts for. For their employees so that if somebody does need to be quarantined, it doesn't, you know, quarantine an entire business where they would have to shut down. We do have some businesses that will be temporarily closing due to COVID. Most of those are restaurants. Just for an example, Popover will be closing the month of February. Again, not related to just, you know, business interruption, business. Lack of business and trying to get her staff ready, not an actual COVID case. Metro Beast will be closing for an extended period of time, again, to try to, you know, keep their. Finances going and, and things like that. But the public needs to know that some of these, these businesses will have some planned closures. Temporarily for, you know, an extended period of time so that they can stay in business. We are helping the essential businesses in Phase 1B. Grocery in particular register right now for the vaccine. It does not mean that they can schedule the vaccine for their employees. But they have been invited by the state to start the registering process and uploading their employee roster. So. We've been talking them through the VAM site, which all of you have mentioned this morning. And then finally, just, you know, a reminder, I've been working with Mike Glidden, who has been working with the fire district and health. On the potential for the vaccine clinic. We've identified some places that were previously mentioned that wouldn't work. But we do have a, and, and I've reached out to Mike Berry, we do have a private business, the square footage is about 38,000 square feet. Who would be willing to donate the space to the town for the vaccine clinics if need be. So. You know, please try to keep me in the loop, especially if you go to private instead of public sites, because we do know what will work and what won't work. And that's it. We're just staying busy and trying to keep all of our businesses open and navigating through this process.
Great. Sarah, thank you for that update. You've just been working so tirelessly on behalf of the business. We really appreciate everything that you and Main Street has been doing for us. Thank you. All right. Next is Mark.
Thank you, Maria. Good morning. Quickly, just to piggyback on some of the vaccine information, I did send out an email to this group, I believe, last week. That if businesses or providers are purchasing additional refrigeration to store. The vaccines, that we do have a program. To offset some of those costs. And there are certain equipment that will qualify for. I think a $1,500 per unit rebate to offset the costs for that purpose. So. There was information in there on how to contact our energy efficiency. So uh, there was information in there on how to contact our Energy Efficiency Group. Um, if you're having trouble reaching anyone, please contact me and I will make sure that you get a response. I just wanted to put that out there. And then also, uh, through COVID, we're seeing uh, additional uh, issues with those out there trying to scam our customers and our neighbors uh, through, you know, various means um, to to get them to pay in kind of non-standard ways where they uh, obviously don't need to. So if there's any, if there's anyone watching or uh, or those here on the call, see a call like that, please call us immediately. There's more information on our website, but we've seen a lot of different types of uh, methods to to scam uh, ever-source customers and I'm sure other utilities as well. But uh, our, you know, call us at eight-hundred-two-eight-six-two-thousand, that's our main customer service number. Um, and then obviously, follow up, not that I want to give the Police Department any any other work, but uh, you know, if there's something that you're really, you know, someone's coming to the door. Every source employees will always have identification to follow up with. Thank you.
Uh, can I, can I, can I follow up? Yeah, um, Mark, thank you for mentioning the uh, the the COVID uh, scams. We're currently reviewing a a short video uh, that I believe the Attorney General Office has put out to see if we can put that out through our Facebook page. I don't know if that um, addresses um, any related to utilities at all, but but there are some on there and we'll we'll look for that. And if it doesn't, then maybe we can reach out and see if you guys have any information that we can then post.
There's quite a bit in our website, we actually have it, I think it's the first kind of box on our main page right now um, of information. And it drills down into a lot of different types of things that we've seen, whether it's people coming to the door, looking for a deposit to change their meter. There's just various things that are going on. Um, but by all means, if you want to link to our website with anything that you're doing, please do so, because it's only going to help the residents of town and our, who are our customers, so.
Great, thank you.
If you need anything, please let me know.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Hey, thanks, Mark. Does anybody have uh, any other items that they'd like to cover before we adjourn?
Uh, Maria, I do. This is Gary Wilcox from the Fire District.
Morning.
Mike, Mike Berry had mentioned the fact that this week we held uh, interviews with four individuals, four good candidates, actually, for the position of the Assistant Emergency Management Director. And and we're excited that we're we're at the the very end of that process. And uh, by next week, we'll, we'll have uh, we'll have a choice of a uh, of a new assistant manager from Mike. And you know, while in years past, we had the expertise of Kevin Kowalski as our Emergency Management Director for many years. And and while we 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 miss seeing Kevin uh, on our, on our monthly meetings and and his uh, his hard work as Emergency Management Director, but uh, but I've got to say that Mike has, in his new capacity taking over for Kevin, he has done a a wonderful job. And so my uh, my compliments to Mike and and his hard work. And we are looking forward to getting him a uh, an assistant so that he's, he doesn't feel like he's, he's out there all by himself. And uh, he certainly deserves a little bit of backup. But as as in what Kevin did, he did a great job in in positioning Mike to be able to take over for Kevin. And we're looking for Mike to do the same with with the new, the new uh, assistant coming in. So so good things to come. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Gary. Yeah, I just want to echo, Mike has been a fantastic addition to the team. We've just really enjoyed working with him and he's done a phenomenal job for the town, so thank you, Mike.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
So I know we've been going, and while the pandemic continues, we normally meet on a quarterly basis, but more recently, we have been meeting monthly. How do folks feel about flagging a month from now, which Thursday, February would be February eighteenth at eight AM? Does that sound like a good time to regroup? Okay, great. Oh, we'll, we will send out a calendar invite for that. Wonderful. Thanks for your time this morning, everyone. Thanks, take care.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.